Good evening, everyone. It is just a little after 6 o'clock, and I am going to call to order the February 13 thing of school committee meeting. Our first item on the agenda is for me to read the following statement. I always forget about. This meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record the meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform other participants of said recording. Harbor Media is here tonight recording. I believe we are recording on Zoom as well for our own minute purposes. Is anyone in the room recording? No, thank you. Anyone on Zoom recording?
Tia has her hand up, I think, about the audio.
Oh, all right. Sorry, we asked someone to let us know if there was an audio issue.
She said it's set you on the phone.
Is, do we know?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Tia, thank you. Is the audio, what's the issue with the audio?
I guess we can't hear itself.
That's not great news.
Ayesha, you want to do that thingamajiggy you do?
Sorry, we're gonna have Ayesha do the thingamajig that she does.
And then it works. Very technical, and we're gonna see if we can make this work.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Can you hear us?
A little bit, it's a little sketchy on my end.
All right. Ayesha's.
I stood up, that's the thing.
Is that the trick? Ayesha stood up, and that's each word. Is that a little bit better?
Yes, that is.
Okay.
Let us know if you start to not be able to hear again.
Yes, we'll have Ayesha, we'll have to stand up. All right, well, thank you very much. So to open our meeting, we are, the second item on the agenda is the public hearing on the fiscal year 24 operating budget. So I'm calling to order the public hearing. The administration is going to give us a brief 15-minute update on the budget, and then we will move to comments and questions about the proposed budget, and then we'll adjourn the public meeting, and then we will move, resume back to our open meeting to continue the regular business of the committee, which will include a discussion of the fiscal year 24 budget. Just a couple of quick things before we start, just to give folks a little bit of information on the budget process for this year, because we've gotten a few emails from folks, and there's, confusion isn't the right word, but there's some misunderstanding, I guess, about how the budget process works. And we're not used to this in Hingham, because we have not asked for an override in a very long time. But when there is an override, a potential for an override at town meeting, the process is that the town meeting has to approve a balanced budget. So two budgets have to be presented at town meeting, a balance, or at least two, two budgets have to be presented at town meeting. A balanced budget, which in this case would result in reduced services, and then a level services budget that would keep the current level of services that we have, but the level service budget would require the town meeting to approve by a 50% majority an override to Proposition 2 and 1/2. In addition to the town meeting vote, there is also a ballot vote that also requires a 50% vote, and that would be the ballot that's held at the local election on April 29th of this year. So there will be a town meeting vote on Monday, April 24th, and then the ballot vote on Saturday, April 29th. So just want to be clear for folks that there are two budgets that have to be presented, one that's balanced, and then one that's the level services with the override. And then they have to be voted on at two distinct meetings and have to pass at both. So just important for folks to remember. So with that, Dr. Adams, I will turn it over to you and Ayesha.
Sure. Well, much of what we present tonight is not new information, but a summary of information that we've presented over, I think, about 10 hours of presentations. So tonight, we'll give you just a brief overview of the priorities of the budget.
You can move the slide forward.
The budget process, how did we get here, which is often a question that we have from members of the community and families. Briefly, some financial enrollment data, an update on the level service budget, an update on the balanced budget, reduced services budget, and a brief discussion on the unmet needs. Just to reiterate, some of the priorities of the leadership team was first to sustain much of the programming that is available to our students. Our schools offer so many supports, academic and social-emotional supports to students, and we wanted to work to sustain.
We have a Zoom bomber.
Yeah.
Hold on a second.
Sorry, folks. Probably.
Yeah. It could be.
I'll keep on going now.
Okay. I'll keep on going, and hopefully they've stopped. All right. We also wanted to support, in addition to supporting current comprehensive programming, we also wanted to support much of the work that's been done over the past two years on the multi-tiered systems of support for both social-emotional and academic. We wanted to also focus on investing in our educators. Much of the strategic plan of the district, the three-year strategic plan approved last spring focuses on professional development, and so we wanted to maintain and invest in our educators. As well as the strategic plan also focuses on maintaining, coming up with plans to maintain our facilities, as well as invest in the capital needs of our building, and really ensure the technology that our students need for today's learning. We also wanted to focus on bringing forward the strategic plan and really trying to retain the resources needed for the implementation of the strategic plan as we move into the second year, next year. Some budget drivers that sort of led to some of the increases that we see in the level service budget, one being increased out-of-district special education tuition costs. We learned from the state, because of inflation, we could expect a 14% increase in those costs. And for context purposes, in the last, in the history of these estimated costs, this is really unprecedented and extraordinary. The costs have been as low as 0.75% to as high as 2.72%. We also know several of our contractual agreements expire at the end of August. We've seen, as many of us have seen, increased fuel costs, and we also have seen such costs in our utilities reduced. There is, in the strategic plan, there's the hope of reducing and eliminating full-day kindergarten, so our level service budget reduces slightly the full-day kindergarten tuition. We've seen increased transportation costs, difficulty recruiting bus drivers, increase in expenses for maintenance of our transportation, and increased costs in fuel as well, and professional development, oh, continues on, not funded. We wanted to also make sure to fund our professional development to support our strategic plan.
I'll give it a.
Ayesha, go to M. Go to M. I can't.
I'm fine. Just change the way. Oh, you have to mark. Sorry, everybody.
Getting rid of, right? There we go.
Just use that. I don't want to wait anymore. Do you want to end the show and then start it again?
Can you just try showing again? She can do it from the side.
Okay.
Sorry.
Got it?
Yep.
All right. So how did we get here? The town revenue has not been growing at the same rate as our expenses. In the FY '22 and FY '23, the town used ESER, American Rescue Plan, and unassigned fund balance as one-time sources to support increases in the budget, and an override is now needed to address that budget shortfall. It was helpful for me to go back, and when folks showed me the warrant, town warrant articles, that allowed me to see that, you can see really clearly in the FY '22 budget, the, there was that 5% increase, and then we can also see in the budget work book, in the warrant book from the town, that there was the use of those one-time funds that allowed us to balance the budget.
If I can just make a comment, too, that as you can see from this slide, this is not just an override to support the schools, this is an override to support services across the town. So this, and across the town expenses have been outpacing tax revenues, not just the school spending.
So that's from the town warrant book from FY '22, and in the next slide, you can see text that actually shows that we use those one-time funds of ESER, ARPA, and unassigned town fund balance. The same holds true for FY '23. There's a slight increase in the school's budget, and again, and in the town municipal government budget, and again, in the warrant book, it clearly says use of one-time funds to balance the budget. And the town also did know that we'd be at this point now where an override was needed in order to address that budget shortfall. This will be the most newest information that we have. We had met with the town on Friday. We had received, originally, we had received the number of 7.5 million, it then became 6.2 million, given the budget forecast for quarter two. That means that we have $4 million worth of a deficit. This is a change from the previous 4.8 million. We received information from the town that they'll be seeking from the unassigned fund balance approximately around $900,000, that it will allow us to, in the balanced reduced service budget, remove that so that our reductions would equal 4 million. So down from approximately 4.8 million to 4 million. This reduction, however, requires the approval of the select board and the advisory, so we were not ready yet to show you what those reductions might be, but because we wanted to err on the side of caution and allow that process to sort of work itself through the municipal side of the government.
In terms of the forecast, this slide here just shows that 6.2 million of the deficit, and just the sources and uses of the funds, and basically showing where, how that number was derived at. 65% of that number, as Margaret indicated, belongs to the schools, and that's how we came up with the 4 million. Okay? Given the changes, if they are approved, the last slide you would have seen, a couple of, the last meeting on February 7th, we were showing 4.8 million, but if it is the proposition that has been put forward to use unassigned fund balance to fund unemployment expenses, then instead of being at 4.8, those expenses will go, those two items will go away, and we will get back to our 4 million. So this slide just depicts, just shows, illustrates exactly where we will be. Oops. Okay, in terms of the financial and enrollment data, this slide here just shows exactly how the budget is split up. Most of our budget is made up of personnel, our teachers, psychologists, and paraeducators, tutors make up most of our budget. We also have contractual lines, which are about 12% of our budget, and those are the areas where, for example, mentoring or teaching contracts dictate, and there's only 5% of our budget that we really have a lot of flexibility with, and hence the reason why most of the reductions that you see going forward are coming from the personnel lines, because it really makes up most of our budget. Okay? In terms of the split between regular education and student services, this slide just depicts that as well, just to give you an idea of how our budget is divided up, with 67% being regular education, 25 student services, and eight maintainers, which is another big part of our budget. And then this slide just kind of shows the same information with a little bit more granularity in terms of athletics and transportation being depicted here.
Just a quick view at our enrollment. The enrollment decline during COVID seems to be stabilizing now in the post-pandemic period that we're in. In addition, here's a total picture of our enrollment. Hopefully, we hope that it's kind of stabilizing now after the pandemic. A little glimpse into the average teacher salary, the blue line, the dark blue line, the third from the top is Hingham. These are comparable districts. These are districts that the state would compare us to, have similar socioeconomic and demographic data as us, as well as here again, Hingham, again at the higher end there at the top. One of the things to note, there are great differences between all of these communities, the size of the districts, as well as health benefits. Much of our educators take health benefits, and we, in Hingham, have a 50-50 split for those, so that also can be impacting teacher, average teacher salaries. This data is also the average from FY '17 to FY '21, so it's a couple years old. Our per pupil expenditures, the blue is in district costs, and the total expenditure would also include our special education out-of-district costs. These, again, are our comparable districts. And then you can also see four benchmark districts that are often used by Hingham in comparison for contractual agreements, and same districts that are similar in size. Our student-to-teacher ratio by comparable districts, we kind of stand right in the middle, and for our benchmark districts, we also kind of land in the district in the middle for our student-to-teacher ratio. You can also see, we've discussed this part of the budget process, that our special education numbers and the number of students on 504s is increasing. You can also see, this is just one snapshot of some approximate hospitalizations. You can also see that we see an increase in hospitalization, which also indicates, just one indicator of several that we've been sharing that indicate the social-emotional learning needs of our students. Thus, we, as has already been shared, we have the level service budget requiring an operational override. It allows us to maintain many of the investments made in the past two years. A balanced budget or reduced service budget that will include approximately $4 million in reductions. That's the budget that gets implemented without an override, and we also added some additional unmet needs.
This here is our level services budget. As Margaret indicated before, this budget includes all of our needs that we currently hold being met, and it does show some increases in some of the lines here. For example, we have increases in professional development. That was one area where we had not fully funded. If you look at the 2022 numbers for professional development, you'll see that it far outweighs the budgeted amounts. So in 2023, 24, in '24, we're trying to make that number whole by investing more in our professional development. We also have contractual obligations within those lines, so we want to make sure that we meet those contractual obligations. As Margaret indicated earlier, in terms of the areas that are driving the budget, heating costs, I'm sure most of you experience that at home, in your own homes as well, with, whether it be oil or gas, the price of those have gone up, and we're experiencing the same here in our schools as well. One of our contracts expires in October of next year, and the costs that we are seeing, based on the current contracts, are almost double the price for natural gas. The war in Ukraine and everything else is probably one of the big drivers of that. One of the big, other big areas that we have, as Margaret indicated before, are tuition costs, out-of-district tuition costs. For those, those went up by 14% in for most of our private and residential tuitions. We also have a bit of a reduction in the amount of grant money we have available this year to apply to those tuition amounts. Number one, in the past, we had upper IDA funds available to apply to anything else that we had, mostly tuitions and other special ed costs, that these grant funds aren't available for '24 anymore, so it means that more, more funds have been, have to be charged directly to our budget for tuitions. So you'll see a big increase in tuitions here as well. Okay? These are just the main areas that where some of the big drivers are in terms of the budget costs from comparing '23 to '24. We also have included a 2% COLA increase, as well as step increases for our teachers as part of this budget here. Then we move on to look at some of the reductions. At this point in time, we're still showing the $4.8 million reduction, and we haven't changed this yet down to the 4 million, because it hasn't been voted in to be 4 million. Once that happens, and should it happen on Thursday as part of that advisory meeting, we will be sure to update this line to reflect exactly where we stand, but we thought it would be, we shouldn't jump ahead of ourselves to reduce that line at this stage. Okay? Just to give you an idea, we divided up some of the reductions and changes that we, into three buckets. Before, as part of our process of creating the budget, we went through to make sure that any efficiencies were reflected in the budget initially. Where we could, we reallocated funds between certain buckets to other areas in the budget, and then as part of what we needed to do to create a balanced budget, there are also reductions. So you'll see three different line items here, and we've tried to depict them in different buckets, basically, just to give a clearer understanding of what they are. In terms of, this is just a summary here of some of the efficiency changes, even before the reductions occurred, that we went through and implemented at all levels within the schools and the different, the various departments. Okay? Some of the reallocations we have, for example, at East and PRS, the principals in those, at those schools are going ahead to reduce the number of paras in their buildings to be able to invest in a special ed teacher at PRS and East, so that these are two reallocations that will happen this year. In terms of removing from a contract, from contracted services for speech and language into an actual speech and language pathologist, just to give you an idea. And then at PRS, it's the one school where we do not have a full teacher. I don't think that change ever happened from when the initial reductions happened back in maybe 2009, I think that was, or '11. So we're trying to make that whole by making sure that PRS has that point two FTEs for their music teacher to be equivalent, equal to all of the, of the other buildings and schools. Okay? And for the facilities, we are reallocating between some savings from our building engineer to now get a, invest in getting a licensed tradesperson.
Can you delete him from the pre-bug?
Yeah, we can just delete him as a participant.
Okay. What's his name, Joe Clark?
Yeah.
Okay, Joe.
The little dots.
And.
On the bottom.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
All right, bye-bye, Joe Clark. Okay. And in terms of our reduced services budget, just to keep us going on our balanced budget, I'm going to just get through those slides very quickly, but don't misinterpret it in any way to mean that we don't value our staff and teachers. We've just been through this process a few times now, so I think this information is also widely available as well, but we're looking at reducing 26.8 FTEs at the elementary level. Some of those changes would include reducing for paraeducators and MTSS coordinator, special ed admin assistants, K-25 science specialists. At the middle school level, we were making 831,000 of reductions, or 13.2 FTEs. Some of those changes at the middle school will include paraeducator inclusion facilitators and others as well at that level. And at the high school, we have 14.1 FTEs that we're reducing, about $1,092,000. For athletics, most of this reduction would be a reduction in non-vasity sports and increased fees. At central office, we have an admin assistant slash receptionist, as well as the fine arts, our fine arts director, along with other changes as well. The curriculum and professional development, all of the increases that we had proposed are being reduced in this budget here. In the maintenance line, we're reducing a tradesperson, student services to administrators, and in terms of technology, some of our supplies, some of our repair budget lines, as well as, and some apps and computer programs as well. For transportation, we're suggesting a transportation fee for all students in grades seven and up, and reducing the late buses at the middle and the high school.
And our hope is that that becomes 4 million after we're able to move the unemployment costs out of the reduced service budget. And to reiterate what Ayesha said, each one of these decisions were extremely challenging for our leadership team. Each person represents an important part of our community, represents services and programs that are important to maintaining our current level of services for our students and meeting the academic and social-emotional learning needs of our students. So each represents a loss and a great challenge, and we did have to make some decisions to propose to you as well. In the last part, we were also asked, in support of the strategic plan, what might see be some additional needs of the district. One would be moving technology costs out of our capital outlay. Most of our capital outlay funding goes to technology and not to maintain the capital needs of our buildings. A nursing coordinator to support increased medical needs and coordination of our nurses, as well as provide coverage when needed. Increased professional development, much of the strategic plan is based on professional development for our staff, in the hope of continuing to move to the elimination of the full-day kindergarten fee, which is also in the strategic plan. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with us as we went through that, and our friends on Zoom. As.
And our hope is that that becomes $4 million after we're able to move the unemployment costs out of the reduced service budget. And to reiterate what Ayesha said, each one of these decisions were extremely challenging for our leadership team. Each person represents an important part of our community, represents services and programs that are important to maintaining our current level of services for our students and meeting the academic and social emotional learning needs of our students. So each represents a loss and a great challenge, and we did have to make some decisions to propose to you as well. In the last part, we were also asked, in support of the strategic plan, what might be some additional needs of the district. One would be moving technology costs out of our capital outlay. Most of our capital outlay funding goes to technology and not to maintain the capital needs of our buildings. A nursing coordinator to support increased medical needs and coordination of our nurses, as well as provide coverage when needed. Increased professional development, much of the strategic plan is based on professional development for our staff, in the hope of continuing to move to the elimination of the full-day kindergarten fee, which is also in the strategic plan. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with us as we went through that and our friends on Zoom. As Dr. Adams said, this was probably 10 to 12 hours of presentations. That was just condensed into 30 minutes, so I know that went fast, but all that information is available on the website. And I also want to just say that while the committee has not yet voted on what the, the level services or the balanced budget yet, I think you have heard from our discussions and deliberations that the real goal here is to get this override passed. Those budget cuts are dire consequences if that happens to human beings, to our staff, to our students, to our families, and no one wants to see that happen across the schools and across the town as well. This will impact every, if this override doesn't pass, it will impact every service that we receive as townspeople. So we believe have a commitment to work together and to get this override passed so that we do not have to face the balanced budget consequences that would be coming our way if this override does not pass. So with that, I'm going to open up the hearing to comments and questions from the public. Carrie Mee is going to graciously help me, because she has the Zoom open. So if you're on the Zoom and you have a comment or a question about the budget, please raise your hand, and we'll recognize you, and we have folks in the room as well. So I will recognize folks, folks in the room, get the distinction of coming up to the podium and, and speaking into the microphone, just give your name and address, either in person or in Zoom. So, do you want to come on up?
Sure.
Thank you. And then Jackie, have you next?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Melissa Sadler, 28, Highbury, Hangham. My question is, we do have a lot of talk about, I look at the balanced budget as being below sea level. I look at the level services budget being at sea level. What is the budget number that you need from this town to pass to get us above sea level? I think we need to look at, I see there's unmet needs, I'm not sure that's going to play into a third budget option, but what is the real number you guys need from the town of Hangham to push us ahead, instead of just us, you know, continuously kicking the can down the road, and then two years, we're going to come back and say, we need more money? You know, what is the right number? So that's my question.
I think the, I don't know if you want to answer it, or?
Go ahead. And then I'll follow.
So if we, so the level services budget that we would get would keep all the services that we have now and continue to move the district forward and would meet most of the strategic plan needs that we have identified. It will not, however, cover the unmet needs that were listed in the chart. So that would be the technology moving from capital to operating, which would then, hopefully, leave the capital outlay amount flat, so that now, that $300,000 that we took out of capital outlay and moved to operating could now get us some more funding to support capital needs in the district. And then the nurse, the nurse coordinator position would be added. And the biggest driver is the full-day kindergarten, funding full-day kindergarten for our townspeople. We are one of five districts on the South Shore and one of 21-ish in the Commonwealth that does not fully fund kindergarten. While there isn't, people seem willing to pay the fee, but it just doesn't, why are we doing it? Why are we charging the fee when most districts are not? We should be able to fully fund our kindergarten program. We all know that it is absolutely integral to get students in the schools full-day, starting in kindergarten, so, actually, starting in pre-K. But for our purposes, we would, that would be one of the things that if we could add that into the budget, that would get us to the full funding that we're looking for.
What's stopping you from adding, what's stopping you as a unit from voting on that number, plus the unmet needs, and putting that towards the ad con and the select board?
We could do that as a, as a board. That could be something that we consider. So we do have to present at least a balanced budget, and then after that, we could also provide a level services budget, and then we could also suggest a third budget option, which would include the unmet needs. So that is definitely something we can consider.
Could you do that? Could we ask you to do that?
Yeah, I mean, we have, yeah, of course, yes. Yeah, no, yeah, yeah. No, absolutely. And when we deliberate and make our votes on the budget, that's, that's what we'll be talking about, yes. So we are hearing from people that that is, from some people, that that is what they would like us to do. Yes, thank you.
Just because you're asking for a dollar figure, the dollar figure of the unmet needs is $1,547,000 and $174 from the, but that's the difference between the unmet needs budget and the level services budget.
So essentially, you'd be going and asking, take $4 million plus the $1.57, and that's your ask, if you were going to go all-in?
Uh huh. Yeah, yes.
And what do we know if you guys go all-in?
It depends when we hold our vote. I don't think we have enough information to vote tonight because we don't know yet what the unemployment consequences are going to be. So, I mean, we have to vote by March 20th, when the warrant articles are due, so we'll be voting in the next, over the next couple of meetings, we would be taking a vote on the budget.
Yeah, and ultimately, no matter what we vote, it'll be up to the select board to put the warrant article in. So, I mean, they asked us for these two budgets, the level services and the unmet needs. I personally, I've been saying this from the beginning, I think we should put the, the unmet needs in there too, but it'll be up to them eventually, as far as whether.
100% of you went in for them, they said, as a school committee, we are unanimously putting forward the all-in budget. They have to take that.
It's their, it's their, it's their decision. It's their decision, yeah.
It's their decision, yes. So we can suggest it, but.
And just to add to Carrie's point, they then have to prove that that affects the overall town override amount, so it might be the $4 million plus the $1.547 million on our end, but plus all the other departments. And so, right now, you know, that number is $6 million. That would change that, we would push it back towards the $1.547 million.
And we're still waiting on the final forecast.
Yes. Right. All right, I see a couple hands. Jackie, you had your hand up, so do you want to come up? Is there anybody on?
Yeah, Tien.
Okay. Tien, I'll get you next, and then person in the back, and then Leslie.
Hello, everyone. This is Ann. Okay. Hi, my name is Jacqueline Bopray. I'm co-president of the HEA and also a teacher at the high school. So I wanted to say that while this override process is horrendously painful and damaging, I'm at least glad that it will give everyone the opportunity to advocate for fully funding the schools that Hangham students need and deserve, and that families want and expect. So our multi-tiered systems of support house is mostly built, and it would be a tragedy to tear it down because it is a cost that students will pay the price for. And I cannot fathom planning causing harm to kids by taking away so many of their academic and extracurricular supports. So I'm trusting in democracy here and hoping that the people of Hangham know that an investment in their children via the schools is a very good one. And on behalf of staff, educators, paraeducators, I urge you to recommend an override amount that fully funds all student needs and attracts and retains the staff to do that work. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to start coming up, there's, all right, come on up, Mary. Sorry, didn't recognize you back there, and then I'll go to Tien. Thank you.
Hi, Mary Power, One King Philip Path. So I spent, I've spent a lot of hours in this room with all of you, and thank you for all the time that you're spending. And I spent a lot of time today preparing some remarks that I think I'm going to send to you because I know that there are a lot of people that want to talk, and I think there's a lot of information to be shared. I would make a couple of points as we're all navigating this very difficult process. First of all, I would hope as a taxpayer and as a parent, that nobody's going to be taking any votes until the citizens of this town have an opportunity to understand, and you have an ability to understand, what the tax impact of all this is going to be. And, you know, we're talking about a billion here and a million there, but I think for many of our citizens who have just absorbed the big tax increase with foster and the public safety facility, this override is going to be a little tougher to swallow. And I'm not saying it's not the right thing to do, I'm just saying that if I were in your shoes, I don't know how I would make a vote without knowing what the tax impact's going to be. And, you know, and I would say that of all the elected officials, because you're all elected by, by, you know, the, by the whole town. So, you know, in terms of your process, I, I hope that's the case. The second point I'd make is that I think we saw in the fall that when the advisory committee and the select board and the school committee came together, it was like, nobody said no. Nobody said no to a single thing. And I really worry that where this may be headed is a bit of a standoff. And again, I don't know what the process is and the sequence of votes, but I think a standoff in the next couple weeks is not going to be good for this town. And so, again, as you're thinking about your votes and other things, I don't know how that's going to work, but I really just hope that a standoff is, is avoided.
Can you explain what you mean by that, Mary?
I mean, what I, like, so what I mean, Tim, is like, you know, let's say that you folks say, you know what, we're all in, we're going to ask for, you know, $65 million plus $2 more million, and we're going to kind of, you know, put, put, put a stake in the ground. So then, okay, so then it goes along a process, and how much is a second override going to be? And what is the feeling of the advisory committee that's a proxy for town meeting? And what if a, if a different number is voted? I just see it getting messy and creating divisiveness at a time when we need to come together. And again, for purposes of time, because I know there are a lot of people that want to speak, I'm happy to, to, to talk further with you about that. But, you know, I guess, you know, I think the other thing I would just add very quickly is, this has been a super painful process. I mean, it's painful for you, it's painful for the dedicated people that work for this town, it's, it's painful for the citizens. So as we go along in this, I don't mind an override every couple years for new stuff, but an override for level services that makes us as a town have to go through this exercise every couple years, I think would be really bad for the town. I think it'll affect whether people want to volunteer, I think it'll affect whether people want to come to work here. So, you know, again, some, some random thoughts. I apologize for taking longer than I intended. And again, I thank you for your time, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to Tien, and then, and then Leslie. Oh, sorry, Leslie, I did not forget you. Yes, I did, but I'm remembering.
Okay. Okay, so I'll ask Tien to unmute. Hi, Tien.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Tien Jozores, I live at Three Beach and Place. Thanks so much, Michelle, members of the school committee, for allowing me to speak this evening. I have been calling very closely to support the override given the current budget of life administration and members of the school committee to protect and not eliminate any counseling positions. Our counselors have the responsibility of providing many different roles in our school. Having four children and hearing other parents' experiences, our counselors are stretched very thin and are expected to be an advisor, an advocate, and mentor to our students and families and their colleagues. As a community, we have witnessed our counselors being in the front line of handling mental health needs for all of our students and families. These counselors play an crucial role, and as any of the parents are going through some challenging times, how these counselors are providing them hope and support that is needed. Our school's successful outcome includes having a well-staffed counseling department. This is not the time to cut these positions. This is not the time to be carefully cutting our budget. We need to support the override. Let's not undervalue their key roles and how important they are to be included in our village of people that help every student and their families in their academic journey in Hangham. Currently, there are a lot of uncertainties, but what is certain is that every student benefits from having a counselor that helps them reach their academic goals, career goals, college goals, and navigate high school. Some parents share that the main reason they left Hangham Public School System to private is that the access to strong and counseling advising department. Eliminating any of these counseling positions would be detrimental and limit the support that is critical for the well-being of every person involved in our education. I ask you to carefully protect and care for our counselors, as they have each and every day for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Tien. All right, Leslie, and then.
And just as an aside, there are a number of clap emojis for that, as you were speaking. Hi, everyone. Excuse me, Leslie Whitman, One Rocky Run. I, I had a couple of thoughts I was going to share. I wanted to give some color around perspective as a parent of young students going through the last couple of years, because I know we've seen a ton of data, and, you know, that's extremely valuable and necessary, but it's also valuable to hear personal stories, I think. But I just first wanted to share that I think the prior comment about how this could get messy, and let's try to avoid doing this too often, I think because we don't do this often enough, it could get messy. And I'm willing to get messy if I have to, because I strongly feel this is something that we have to fight for. Our kids deserve this after a couple of horrific years during COVID, and thinking about how bad things could get if this doesn't, the override doesn't go through, and, and, and with all its bells and whistles, I, I'm not talking about, you know, a cutback version, you know, down from $4 million to $3 million, I'm talking about the whole thing, is, is almost too much to think about. I think what, what actually is messy right now is, is what we had to go through for our educators and staff to hear that they, you know, could be eliminated. I think this could have been avoided if we had been doing overrides gradually. I think taxpayers would benefit if we looked to do that in the future, because it's not such a sharp increase, it doesn't hurt if you do, you know, we all know how to budget our own families, if you do things gradually, if you set, set money aside, it's not as painful as you have a, when you have a big, you know, thing to pay down all at once, which is essentially where we are. But what I wanted to say is, I have, I have a nine-year-old daughter and a 12-year-old son and a 14-year-old son. The 14-year-old and the nine-year-old are old for their grade, they're both fall birthdays, and they went to the same preschool, they had the same kindergarten teacher, they were very much on the same trajectory. You can guess where the story is going, right? My nine-year-old is at a vastly different place than where my, excuse me, 14-year-old was when he was nine, okay? I got a Facebook reminder of a picture of Toby when he was eight, reading the newspaper on his birthday, and I was like, wow, this kid is growing up so fast. My nine-and-a-half-year-old now couldn't sit down and read the newspaper. She's doing great, her report card was great. And this isn't about my kids, but the point is that even the kids who aren't, you know, in that group of kids needing IEPs, you know, increased kids, even the kids who, you know, are getting pulled out for special services, she's not one of those kids, but she's far behind where she would have been had COVID not hit. And I don't blame anyone in this room for, you know, how she was educated, we all did the best we could, but we can't deny the reality that every student in the district is, is behind where they would have been otherwise, and they deserve the resources to get them to where they should be. The other point I wanted to make is, is this thought about if we have to jump off the cliff, getting rid of, you know, freshman sports and the fine arts director and all the arts that, that go along with that, that I have, my 14-year-old is in eighth grade, okay? These eighth graders came into sixth grade, into the middle school with very little, you know, social support because of COVID. They didn't have the soccer games that my other child enjoyed to get to know their, you know, their teammates. They didn't have the halfway through the year in seventh grade, the parents going in to clap, all these little things that sort of add to the educational experience and, and provide for their, you know, well-being during school have been pretty absent relative to the experience of my seventh grader, okay? I'm not saying they're completely absent, and I'm saying everyone is doing a tremendous job to get these kids back to where they are. But the thought of these eighth graders now going into high school and potentially not having sports or having reduced arts is, again, too much for me to think about, okay? I never, I, my high school experience with sports was such an incredible part of my experience. I had sort of accepted that my kids may not play varsity sports in Hangham, right? We excel in sports, and the flip side of that is that not everyone gets to play varsity sports that they want, which, again, I had accepted, but I can't accept that my children may not get to play freshman sports, okay? That is too much for me, and I have no doubt that someone is going to step in, should we get to that point, and create an incredible club experience for these kids, okay? But not everyone in town would be able to afford that, right? These club sports cost thousands of dollars. And I can tell you that it's kind of miserable to see a 14-year-old not playing sports, because my son just fractured his wrist three weeks ago. So I am watching him come home after school and not be able to go to his soccer practices and see his friends and exercise his body, he's not going to hockey practices. These are really detrimental to kids this age, and I hope and pray we don't get to that point. I hope we don't have to, you know, get messy, but as I said, I think parents in this room, parents in this town, and I hope other people, not just parents, will rally to get the parents in this town, and I hope other people, not just parents, will rally to get this passed, because this is truly what our kids need and deserve. Thank you.
Hi, Wendy Finnerty, Six River View Road. I'm here to speak from the vantage point, the three vantage points that I represent tonight. First, I speak as a resident and taxpayer in Hingham. I've been a resident for 40-plus years. While my family was young, residents whose children may have graduated continue to support our schools. Now, I feel that it's our time as an older citizen to do the same for the children who are currently making their way through the school system. Every generation needs to pay it forward to keep our schools top-notch. Top-notch schools means top real estate values. If this override doesn't pass, I definitely think that people will see a big change and decline in their property values, so that's something to think about going forward. Secondly, I speak as a parent of a rising senior. It terrifies me to think about what her senior year and college application experience will look like, and should a level service override not pass? What things will drop off? Like our friend just said, we're a town of rich offerings of extracurricular activities, all of which make for a well-rounded student and college applicant. How could we, as townspeople, let our children's hard work and future suffer by not funding these essential programs? Remember, these are the rising seniors who started their freshman year of high school online. How many more disadvantages do we want to hand them? And what does this mean for the future of all the underclass students as well? What about incoming freshmen with no JV sports or teams? What about the middle schoolers with no kind of extracurricular activities? These are the things emotionally that are supporting our children. If we take them away, that is a huge detriment to our poor kids in the community. Finally, I speak as a Hingham Public Schools employee. I spent the past 12 years as a parent educator, supporting classroom teachers and students day in and day out. I cannot fathom an elementary classroom with less parent support. How could we teach 22 five- and six-year-olds how to read and write without that support? Those are the building blocks that build this education from the ground up. If you take that building block away at the elementary level, where are they going to be in the future? How could you maintain the blue ribbon school status of our school system with 60 less staff members? And in a time where it is clear that our children are still suffering academically and emotionally post-COVID, how could we pull the rug out from under them? In a time when additional support is needed most, we are talking about dropping services. Please raise a hand if these points resonate with you here or at home. We must fully support everything our students need and expect. They are the future. We owe it to them, and we owe it to the town.
Thank you, Wendy.
Hi, Liza O'Reilly, 19, Porter's Cove Road. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Adams, Ms. Roberts, Ms. Pung, Dr. Viness, for all the details and transparency of this year's budget presentations. It's been tremendous. And I want to thank the school committee for all your work and commitment to our students, staff, and our community. I had the privilege of serving on the school committee for nine years, from May 2013 until May 2022. This budget year is a tough one for all of you, but the town finally has some choices. I support the override request to maintain a level services budget and to consider more. Maybe we can give people a couple of choices to vote on, too. The Proposition 2.5 law and Hingham Town Meeting Process dictates that a balanced budget be presented. It is painful to see what that actually means. To balance any budget for any organization, one must either cut costs or increase revenues. This goes for a family, a nonprofit, a corporation, or a government. Since 2011, Hingham School Committees have advocated to the various select boards and advisory committees for an increase in revenues, using either the full 2.5% levy or the opportunity to present an override to the voters. The last override, when East School was opened, only half of the school committee requested funds were presented to the voters, who thankfully approved them. From fiscal year 2012 to fiscal year 2023, the town relied on new growth revenues, reserve fund transfers, and federal grants for additional revenue, but it was never enough to deliver what the school committee knew was necessary to meet student needs, state mandates, federal mandates, and legal obligations. The school committee had to cut costs in the requested budgets to support a town-wide balanced budget. COVID exposed the lack of resources when hundreds of students chose to unenroll from our schools, as Hingham didn't have the staffing, technology, services, and infrastructure to deliver an educational program equivalent to private schools or other districts. I am very glad to see that so many younger students are coming back. Hingham has had four superintendents in the past five years, five budget cycles, who each declared Hingham has a revenue problem, not an expense issue. All four stated Hingham Public Schools run lean, and each calculated the comparison information to benchmark districts to prove the case, as you saw tonight, again, fourth variable. Four educational experts, all with PhDs, hundreds of combined years of experience. One was homegrown, one from out of state, one from a large district south of here, and one from a comparable-sized district from the North Shore. All came to the same conclusion. We need to trust them. This override is needed. I understand there are still questions in the community about when can the administration remove the tutors, special education, and other support staff that we added two years ago? When will the students be learning at the level we expect them to be? Well, allow me to remind you that the school committee has requested, and the school administration has requested additional resources to support student learning for years. Special education has been a gradual expansion as student needs increased, and we added programming, because students should be, and Hingham wants them to be, in district and not placed at private schools or out of district. Math tutors were requested for every year for at least the past 10 years, because we knew students needed the support. Reading tutors have been added for small group instruction over time, and I can tell you that my youngest child used them and had a very different experience than my oldest. Subgroups of students were not meeting all accountability requirements, and resources were added and reallocated. The MTSS Social and Emotional and Academic Supports and Toolbox Program were needed prior to COVID. All of this is working, and the data shows it. Three weeks ago, at the January 24th DUCs, and it's the state board meeting, the state board heard proposals from the commissioner regarding the COVID learning deficits and achievement gaps, and how to set targets to meet federal and state accountability requirements going forward. The proposal included using the goal of reaching 2019 proficiency measurements. However, there were several board members who spoke up, asking, why are we settling for 2019? Massachusetts should aim higher for our students. So back to the question of when will the extra staff no longer be needed? The additional staff were needed before COVID, and Hingham will always need them, because children need supports to meet proficiency goals and to be good people. COVID exposed and enlarged these gaps. The state requires us to meet education targets for all students. These positions that we added can't be considered a one-time fix and are not the same as an antibiotic prescription that will cure a virus. These positions are what is necessary to educate the children of Hingham and help them be the best that they can be year in and year out. The reality is that the balanced budget proposal cuts, the balanced budget proposal cuts the added positions and more. Hingham will be in serious jeopardy of meeting the obligations of state and federal accountability targets and other regulations, in my opinion. Do we really want or need to go there? Why would we want to take away what is finally working? Or, as certain DUC board members stated, why would we settle for baseline achievement and not aim higher to support our students? The current Hingham Master Plan vision states that our community wants and expects to provide excellent schools and support families by meeting the needs of children and youth, offering a wide range of recreation, athletic, social, and cultural activities. The Master Plan also strongly supports the implementation of the strategic plan. The level services budget delivers on this expectation and this vision in the Master Plan. We, as a community, must come together to support the vision we declared for ourselves. Our town's form of government allows the registered voters to have the final say on the town budget. The select board makes the decision of what is presented to the voters. This year, we can finally consider a revenue increase to achieve a balanced budget and deliver the services we want, rather than being forced to accept cuts. Thus, my thank you goes out to the current select board for putting this up for consideration, finally. So, to parents in the audience online and my fellow Hingamites, I urge you to please support the school committees and the school administration's level services budget and an override. Please attend town meeting on April 24th, vote at the town election on April 29th, and tell all of your friends and neighbors, we need everybody there. Our town government relies on the voters to make the ultimate decisions, so please participate. So thank you all for your commitment and your dedication to making this a reality. This has been a long fight, and this year, we can make it happen, and so thank you for everything you guys are doing. Please, we need everybody in the town to get behind this. It could be a tough fight, but it's a worthwhile fight, and a long one, that's a long time coming, so thank you.
I don't see anyone. Yes, come on up.
Hi, I'm Kim Johnson for Heather Lane. You know, I agree with many of the points that have been made tonight. I think the thing that's been sitting with me of this issue is from a diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging perspective. And I share that because I have a student at our public school and a student at a private school. And I'm not going to go into all the ins and outs of why that's where we ended up, but I do know that I'm really fortunate as a family that we've been able to make those choices based on the needs of each of our kids. And I think about over time, if we make the cuts that are being proposed, the gap that would start to emerge between the experience that my daughter is having at the public school and my son is having at the private school, and over time, what that does to our community in terms of creating a bigger gap between the haves and the have-nots. And so I encourage, like so many others, that we all get out there and really understand this, the impact of it, not just for this voting cycle, but where we'd be as a community three years from now, five years from now, as we think about the way in which our kids are growing up. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room for public comments during the hearing? All right, not seeing anyone. Let's take an opportunity to say thank you very much to everyone who participated tonight, and I am confident we'll participate in the democratic process of town meeting and the ballot vote on April 29th. As we've heard so eloquently from folks tonight, this is a painful process. I know we all feel it. We feel terrible that people are having to live through this every day, the staff, the families, the students. We're going to do our best to come to good decisions and make excellent proposals to select board and advisory, and then ultimately to the town meeting, for folks to vote on what they value in this town and what they want for services. It's going to be a lot of effort, and we're going to spend a lot of time doing it, but we've heard your comments and your questions tonight, and we appreciate them very much. You can reach out to us. We're going to have several more meetings on this. Our budget workshops are concluded, but we have an advisory, select board, school committee joint meeting on this Thursday at 7:00 PM. And then, we will have our next school committee meeting, February 27th. I would expect we'd at least, on February 27th, I'm hoping we'd at least be taking a vote on some portion of the budget, because we should have more information by then. But so stay involved, stay engaged, pay attention to when meetings are being held. If, you know, folks have feedback for us, for a select board, for advisory, those meetings are open to the public, and they are also, you know, heard through emails and phone calls, so please stay engaged. Thank you very much. And with that, I will, do any have a motion to adjourn? I'll take a motion to adjourn the public meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing and resume an open meeting.
Aye, all second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've adjourned the public hearing, and we will now move to our open meeting to discuss the regular business of the day. See, everyone was here for the fun part, but, which is perfectly right.
So we had 135 on.
Oh, great.
And then 129 would be adjourned, so people.
Good, awesome. All right, and that was good, and so hopefully folks get to high school on time. All right, item three on the regular meeting agenda is minutes of the school committee meeting held January 23rd. Pushing those off. So we are not thirty minutes. Item four, questions and comments. Given all the comments we just heard, I'm going to guess no one in the room has comments. Anyone online? If you have a comment about something not on the tonight's agenda, you can raise your Not seeing anyone. I'm going to move on. At five, superintendent's report. Dr. Adams?
Great, sorry.
I moved way too fast.
The first thing I wanted to share was a brief presentation on some artifacts for my formative evaluation. So remember, the formative is midway through the process, and so we're about a little past midway to present some, an update on the goals, on the three goals that I set as part of my evaluation process, and present some artifacts for you. So first, just a reminder of those goals. The first one being to support an entry and direction setting for the district. These are some of the action steps that I outlined for that goal, was to present in July an entry plan, which I did, and outline what I'd be doing as part of that entry over the last couple of months, and plan in March to be able to present a report on that entry plan. And also, part of that was to develop a communication plan, which we presented in September, and will also present an update at the end of the year on the goals that we've been able, what we've been able to accomplish towards those goals. We're working on presenting three updates on the strategic plan. You'll get number two tonight, and a third one later on in the year, as well as during the summer, we'll work to do an update of the strategic plan based upon our progress this year. By February, well, it'll be by March, completing a report on my entry findings. We've begun a planning process for several things that are ongoing, one being a technology plan that we'll present to you at the end of the year, which will be a three-year technology plan, professional development plan, which we will likely do as a two-year plan to sort of match the strategic plan, as well as we're in the process of doing an equity audit, which we also will plan to present. It's going to be a busy June and July with lots of plans to share with you, but they really deepen the work that's been done as part of the strategic plan to really outline really further how we deepen and further those objectives that are outlined in the strategic plan. Some of the things that you'll see linked, hyperlinked, was that entry plan, which you already saw, the communication plan, a strategic plan update, which was shared with you, the staffing audit, a summary of some focus groups I did with parents to get further input on my entry plan. And we also started doing some equity walks as part of our equity audit, and linked there is a protocol sort of revised to allow for that work to continue to really focus. is a protocol sort of revised to allow for that work to continue, to really focus on, to help us continue to support our school and district leaders, to support educators, and really focus on best practices in teaching and learning. The second goal was maintaining momentum during the transition. This goal really focuses on supporting the evaluation process for school principals, completed, and our district leaders, completed the evaluations for those who are new, formatives, and we've set professional and student learning goals that are aligned to the strategic plan. We also, we've been through the budget process, you've been through multiple presentations about school and district data. We will be also, next meeting in February 27th, we hope to present to you a winter update, a full update on the status of our fall, comparison with our fall and winter data, assessment in literacy and math. And we just started, much more work to be done around continuing to update those district procedures and policies. So, just some artifacts for you, an example of the school improvement plans, which we also hope to have in June, July, principals to come back and provide an update on their progress towards their school improvement plans. A sample of, from our July leadership retreat, which really focused on really drawing that through line with the strategic plan, where our school and district leaders were asked to think about student learning and professional practice goals that really aligned with the strategic plan. A schedule of visits that I've made to the buildings, those visits served the purpose of really trying to support our school and district leaders at the building site, and as well allow me to really learn of what's happening and be aware of how we can better support our leaders and our educators. Some examples of some things we've started, our Spanish pre-K program, part of KIA, we'll be holding our lottery on Friday. We have enough students for a full class, so we'll begin starting that planning process. The pilot of the strings program, and our hope to expand Medco. The last goal was participation in the new superintendent induction program. I've been attending those content sessions, completing the assignments, and using the assigned coach as well, and you'll see some evidence for those, my entry plan again, the meeting dates, and the dates that so far this year that I've met with the coach for support.
I'm sorry. Need water? I have a question, does anyone have a castrum? Sorry, thank you. Ness has one, thank you. Any questions from anyone in the committee about this well-laid-out plan? Thank you. No? Okay, great. Thank you.
The second thing was, just, I put in the folder for you, the district and school report cards. This is a yearly, yearly report that comes out for each school in the district. We will be sharing these with school, with families after break. There's a letter that we get as a template, we kind of personalize it for the, each school, and we'll be sharing links to these school and district report cards. They'll be linked on our website as well, so that will be coming out for families. One of the things we noticed, if you look at elementary, it shows that none of our students are doing, have completed any digital computer science courses, if you noticed that. That's an Aspen reporting era. All of our students, elementary, 100% are engaged in digital literacy, once in the six-day cycle, so we hope to change that, we will change that for the next reporting cycle for next year. So, that was one of the things we noticed right off, that was incorrect, so we'll be changing that for next year. We can't go back and change this year's.
Will that be explained in the letter that goes out to parents?
Yes, we're working on some wording to sort of explain that, because that's an elementary piece, yeah.
That was my question, so, that's good. One thing I did notice, just as, it relates to the budget discussion we just had, or hearing we just had in the discussion later, is just our, the access to the arts in our school. I think that's something, given the proposed cuts, if the override doesn't come through, I think that's important for people to see.
I agree. I noted that, I noted that as well, and a couple other things that would be impacted, yeah. So, any other questions on that? Item six are communications. Dr. Adams, do you have anything?
No.
Nathan? Do you have our student report? Hello? I barely see them.
I thought it was just pure budget hearing.
Oh.
I didn't prepare much of this.
That's okay.
But, just basic stuff, we have a student advisory committee meeting tomorrow morning, so we're going to be discussing mostly just anything that we can do, like kind of build student engagement during budget process, it's going to be number one thing, and then also preparing for our other meeting on Wednesday, which is when we're going to present at school council on some ideas for the community service requirement. And additional updates, our school had a unity week last week, so, just on that, I'll just give a little honest summary to kind of give feedback where we are with some of that diversity, equity, and belonging stuff. We got some engagement in the activities, however, some of them were pretty struggled to get numbers. We had to cancel the school dance on Friday, and the, the dance, a group that was brought in Thursday had a, there was some groups there, but like, we really boosted the attendance because the chamber class went and watched it instead of doing our rehearsal. And so, I think that it was, in some ways, a reflection that many students aren't really engaged with these efforts, and that there's a lot more work to get students to engage in school activities. And there's kind of a culture of outside of sports not wanting to engage with them. I don't know what the steps are, just on that, but I thought that that was a significant piece of feedback that was learned from that week. Overall, though, I mean, people wore their colors, I mean, we had a fun time, and so, that was the feedback from there. Much else to update on? I also would like to say I just want to thank Alex for coming to this last meeting with me, and I thought it was really helpful to get a second student perspective sometimes, just someone who gave different perspectives, and it was really helpful with these meetings. Finally, congrats to Jack Kelleher for winning his state wrestling, uh, sectional wrestling jacket. Got to get the sports ones in there.
Thank you very much, Nathan. It was very helpful to have Alex here. You both did a very commendable job in bringing the student perspective to the table, so thank you, we all really appreciated that. I did notice that the first event of Unity Week, the, the, was really successful, open mic, yeah.
The open mic really landed, I was surprised and really happy about that. I think that the fact that one of those events worked really well was enough to make that week a success. So many people really want to do it, everybody did a really good job with their performances. Yeah, it's something that could go poorly and went really.
Yeah.
They had to balk on scripts, but.
I wouldn't have noticed. Ness and I arrived for office hours and thought we were so popular, and then we're like, oh, they're not here for us, they're here for, they're here for the kids. But no, that was a big win, yes.
I just wanted to add a comment, too. Just thank you for trying to engage the kids, the students, the budget season. I think the next couple of months, like Student Voice, will be incredibly important, especially from here, the public needs to hear from the student perspective on how the reduced services budget will affect your life and all that, that's a perspective only the students can give, so I really appreciate you trying to.
I think many of the students I've been talking to are really engaged off the bat, especially the students who are involved in music, got really fired up. People who had really good experiences in their freshman sports teams got really fired up. People who have teachers that they have who might get, lose their jobs, got really pretty angry about that. So, pretty much in general, all the students are feeling pretty passionate about this, so as long as they get the information about how the process works, I think that their demographic that can really help get this on the right across the line.
Yeah, that would be great for them to come to town meeting if they're eligible to vote, and if not, just to talk to other community members, particularly non-parents, right? Grandparents, neighbors, things like that, I think that would be very impactful. So, thank you. Matt?
I just had a question on Unity Week participation. I seem to remember last, I thought the participation was really strong last year, but I'm wondering, did I just misunderstand? I think it was during Rex's presentation, like, was it down significantly, or?
What are you asking about? Sorry.
Sorry. That happens at home a lot.
My god, my god.
I was saying, you mentioned the participation of Unity Week wasn't as strong as you had hoped, or everyone had hoped. Was it significantly down from last year, or?
Well, it wasn't a great habit last year. We had it last year, it wasn't great last year, but specifically with like, the, the trying to do like a dance at the end of Unity Week, it was a little bit better last year. But I think what partially contributed to the cancellation of it this year was that the last year's one was poorly attended, but enough attendance for it to happen, and that kind of put a little bit of a bad taste and kind of caused this one to get canceled, so. But other things in Unity Week, like the open mic, were able to grow from where they were last year, so it, it, stuff went different directions, yeah.
A work in progress, and it's only the second year, right?
Yeah, no, I think it's definitely got promised to fill the, I just want to throw it up there.
No, thank you. And Ness, did you have something?
I had the same question as Matt, but you know, recognizing Friday, too, was probably tough because there was a big basketball game, I know there was a lot of people at that.
They tried to work it around, but I don't know if that entirely worked, or if it came across that they were trying to do that. Because I, yeah, I do know about that. Congratulations to Liam, who got his 1,000 points, I didn't actually get about that. That is a terrible failure by me to get that into record.
Put it in the minutes.
And it was an all-time scoring record. That was last week, so that wasn't in my head, I got this morning sports news in my head.
For the male player, correct?
Yeah, first, yeah, first male player to hit 1,000 points. I think there's two people in the girls' team that have done it.
That is very impressive.
Really, really impressive. I'm very sorry to him, I forgot to mention that.
He'll forgive you.
We'll put it in the minutes.
Yeah. We do have a fair amount.
I congratulate you on school day, okay?
Yes, there you go, that's what really matters. All right, thank you so much, Nathan. Any other communications?
I just wanted to note that we've gotten a number of emails from parents about the override and the school budget, and just really appreciate, they're very thoughtful emails, and just appreciate everyone for sending them in.
Yes, thank you, I was going to note those. Yeah, thank you. Again, thank you for trying to each of them. All right, move on to unfinished business. Some point one is to discuss the proposed fiscal year budget. We haven't acted as appropriate, which we could act tonight if we wanted to, but I personally feel like I don't, still waiting for more information. I don't know how deep in the weeds people want to get into the discussion tonight, but I don't know, just do, anything you want to add? From your presentation, you're good, all right.
Can I just ask, what is the information we're waiting for?
We don't have the final forecast.
Okay.
We don't have the AdCom decision on how they're going to fund unemployment.
Okay.
So, I think that's a big one. I don't think there was a third thing.
Is that the tax calculator? I know that's come up.
Oh, yes, it's the tax calculator.
Are they holding until?
They're waiting for the final figure.
Yes, they're waiting for the final number. Although, if people are interested, I did find one on the Department of Revenue, there is a tax calculator, and you can put in your town's name, the dollar amount of the override, and then it shows you the average, not, doesn't do the median, but it shows you the average tax impact, and then it breaks down by like, 250, 250,000, if your home is worth 250, 350, 450, and it goes all the way down to like a million 150, I think. So, that was really, I think I sent that to you as well, that was interesting.
Yeah, because the last forecast was 6.2, so if you plug that, and you can see where you would fall.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's, yeah, I was, I wasn't sure how easy it was to find, and it was like, oh, I didn't know.
Because I do feel like that's a question, it's a little chicken or the egg, we won't have it until we have those final numbers that people want to see before they give us anything on the override, what that impacted.
Yes.
I think one thing, the potentially we could start to talk about, is I think we heard loudly from people in the, certainly in the audience tonight, about wanting to submit two or three budgets. I don't know what direction that discussion goes in, I'm certainly not deciding on anything tonight, but, that's something to add on to the list of things we should discuss.
Yes. I'm just definitely, okay.
Wouldn't movie?
No, go ahead.
I would totally agree or support, especially on that. On the more information, I am curious, on the balanced budget. I know we need to wait for AdCom to, whoever, is it AdCom, to approve the 800,000, or not approve it, but let's assume they approve it. I recognize it's hard for you all to have to make a decision on what's the 800,000 is going to come off, and now you're further segmenting an already difficult process. But I know for myself, like, I would want to understand what the difference is, what we're voting on, I guess, so, do, is the plan to go through, and actually, if it is approved, to show what positions are safe or positions of services are safe?
Remember, we did it in levels, so you could guess that we'd probably start with level four. And in our discussions, we're prioritizing student-facing positions, so those would be teachers, we were prioritizing.
So, that makes sense. I still, on the balance side, would love to either have a discussion or have an understanding, we talked a little bit like a couple weeks ago, around, instead of eliminating activities or sports or athletics, what would the number be if you increased fees instead of eliminating? And I know we kind of said, well, it might be too high to do that, I would want to understand what that is before voting on eliminating them in the balance. So, it sounds like those, they'll remain eliminated in the $4 million, because of the amount of student.
Yeah, we could present some scenarios, the, we'd have to raise the fees significantly to raise that amount of revenue. One would be to, we have been doing one fee for the, for the year, instead of by sport, so we'd have to go to something like raising for each season, so a fee for each season, which currently is $325, so we'd have to do the scenario if we did $325 per season, which is about a little under $1,000 for a family. We'd have to figure out some cap, so that's for a family, and then, once you raise fees, you have less participation, because the recreational kind of kid who might just try out and just do it for fun is probably going to say, well, I won't do it, and not participate. So, you have some drop-off in attendance, so we'd have to do some scenarios.
I mean, I hesitate asking, because I know you've got a million things going on. I would say that, I've heard a fair amount of feedback from people on activities and athletics, and so, like, I guess I feel like, if it's not, if it's not too hard, just do some sort of, because like, I, you read the numbers, you're like, it's 1,000 bucks, you know? I was reading the numbers, and I was like, I think it's like 150 bucks, I'm sure you're right, I'm wrong, but it would be helpful to have, it's closer to 1,000 versus.
The fees would be significantly high, and so, that's the burden on the family, you know, how high you make it before you start to actually lose participation, and raising the fees doesn't even make sense anymore, so, that's a challenge.
I would just point out that we are going to lose participation if we take away freshmen in JV sports.
It's part of the calculation.
Well, remember, it's freshman sports primarily, that's, yeah.
And I guess, just to add to that, if we do go through some scenarios to raise the fees, could we build into that number, making sure that if there is a student who can't, their family can't afford them, make sure that that's covered as well? If people are that willing to pay fees to keep the sports, I think we need to build that in, because it is a public school.
Can't afford needs to be kind of defined, too.
Yeah.
What we've done for the fully kindergarten is have a sliding scale, so that's something that we can do as well, but it also is another thing that, once you have a sliding scale, it means that you're reducing the amount of revenue that you're collecting as well.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's part of the calculation.
And we'd be guessing at those numbers.
Right.
Just guess-making estimates.
Right.
I was thinking, too, that another piece of information that we don't have yet, and I don't know when, typically when that would come, but like these are that leaves of absence. So people who would be looking to take a leave of absence next year, who may not have told us yet, we don't know those figures yet either. And I get that those can come until probably the end of the school year. But I was thinking that, because that often has moved the needle a bit on the budget. And I think George mentioned that the other night, too. Yeah, the balanced budget piece of it is, I, in my, from where I'm sitting, that's the trickiest part of the whole thing, because there's so much, I mean, I guess because they're so drastic, the cuts, that it's just hard to wrap our heads around it. And I, without being too Pollyannaish, I'm trying to be more like, let's focus on getting the override approved versus the cuts, but people need to be notified. Like, that's the only thing. Like, we do have to make decisions on those. And I, to be honest with you, I want to get a little bit of clarity from the town side, is if, when we vote the number for level and balance, how will Holden Harvey to the balanced budget number, if it, if, in the worst-case scenario, if the override doesn't pass, and we do have to meet the balanced budget, does the committee, I mean, it is, it is up to the committee, how the funds are spent. So there may want, there may need to be some reconsidering of what was eliminated and what was not. But that's, that's hard to do, and so much of it is personnel, because people will need to have them notified.
So are we voting on a number, or are we voting on a budget?
That's the big question. And, but I mean, the more I'm digging into it, it does seem like we're voting on a budget, not just the number.
Remember, at town meeting, you have to present that balanced budget to the town. So it's not just the number you vote, they're voting on, they're voting on the budget as a whole.
But then, if we vote on the number, and assume that override doesn't pass, so we come back to the table, and we can do, like assess where the fees are. So we have a number that we need to stay to, but then we can make other decisions. If we hear from the community they are willing to pay an additional fee for sports, then that might change what we do, and we might go to, you've done a great job of going through the different levels, and we might be able to get to the second level of cuts, and not have to do the third or the fourth, because we are able to increase fees on other things. And I don't think we know that until we start surveying parents and people in town to see what they are willing to do.
Yeah, there is a point where fees don't generate enough to cover 4 million.
Right, but we can reallocate at like, at after-town meeting, once the town puts on the budget. If we need to move things around, to cut something and not cut something, then we still have that authority, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Can we talk about the three budgets, plus of that scenario?
Yes.
Can we start by explaining a little bit, if we do go in with a third budget, what does that look like in terms of process? We vote on the level services number, and then we come up with a third number that we vote on, and then delivery amongst ourselves, if we want to add in all those unmet needs or somewhere in the middle?
So I think that we, the process is that we will vote on budget numbers, balanced, and then level services, and then if we want the level services plus, or I guess we could also just go straight to level services plus and not have level services, although that's what we've asked to present. And then we can make, I mean, we can make our case to the advisory committee and the select board, and see what the appetite is. But in the end, it's not, the school committees, what we vote may or may not match what they are putting forward.
I mean, it seems, I don't know how representative the group was, the audience was tonight, online and in public. It seemed like we got a strong message of, we are not satisfied with either of these budgets. We want the unmet needs budget. And I know that's a very select crowd, but it seems like in the spirit of democracy, to give people the right number of choices, where one of those is one thing that they want.
Yes, I would agree. I think what we want to be, I think what our goal needs to be is to present the budgets that have the best likelihood of passing as well. I think we have to keep that in mind, too. So if we think that presenting three budgets to select board and advisory gets them to add three budgets, right, that's, that's a potential. Because right now, it's balanced budget, and then another or others, right? So there could be more than, there could be three options, four options, whatever. I mean, I think no one, no one wants to make it too many options. But my understanding is there are towns that have presented three budgets to town meeting, so that is something that we could advocate for and try to get.
I would be a proponent of putting forth three different budgets. The balanced budget, then the level services, and then the level services plus the unmet needs.
And this is, this is a technical question about how the vote works, but is there a danger of putting forth three budgets and saying, the vote between the unmet needs and the level services gets split, and the reduced, reduced services budget narrowly squeaks through, even though clearly a majority of the town wanted more funding?
I think, I mean, for me, I think it, for us to do that, if we were to present three budgets that we're going to vote on, it signals to the select board, this is what the committee thinks that they need to do. And then, you know, I would be a proponent of giving the town options, and then they go through the process of deciding whether they want to put the three different budgets on the warrant and the ballot, and what those levels are. And I think we can come back and revote our budgets after they kind of work through that process. You know, I think it's, I think this is a normal part of the process. We will vote what we think we need to vote on for the school, and then they will kind of go off and do their thing, and then we typically will revote our budget, so that we are in line with them and we are in agreement with them. But I think we should be proposing and voting on a budget that we, as a school committee, think the school department needs. We are, we are elected to advocate for the schools, and I think that's what we have to do first. And I always like to say that we are, we are the voice of the people who can't vote for themselves. We're, we're voting for them. We're voting for their benefit. And, and I don't think this has to be an argument. I don't know why there is that contention right now that this turns into an argument. We just have this healthy debate and conversation. We're not arguing.
I mean, I think it, it makes it, it's messy, but democracy is messy, right? I mean, but that, I mean, the process is messy, and this year it's messy and painful. But I would agree. I mean, I don't think, I mean, I think it is worth our efforts to at least propose it. And if the other bodies that are going to be informing the budget, advisory committee and select board, feel strongly that that's not the avenue to go in, then I think we can, we can decide whether or not we want to accept that, and go in together, right, with, you know, with united numbers, or consistent numbers. But we can also decide that it's worth our time to try to make that.
Because we're, so we're voting on, we would potentially vote on three different budgets to present to select board and advisory, not necessarily the town meeting. Select board and advisory, because we don't get, yeah.
You don't get to vote.
Then they would make the decision on whether to put it forward.
Right.
Now, I'm assuming that they're not going to want to make their decision until they have their final forecast.
Yes. Yeah. Ali, I'm going to go to Matt, then Carrie.
I just, I, it's necessary, I also want to support going forward, asking for everything that the schools have said that they need. Being the new young committee, I feel like I came into this, and Margaret and Ayesha and team didn't come to us and say, here are the list of things that we'd like to have. They came in and said, these are the list of things that are needs that are not met in the level services budget, and going through the strategic planning process, if we're going to meet those goals, and you look at that list, those are pretty integral pieces of meeting the strategic plan. Without them, we then fall behind on that. So I think that there is a strong kind of call here. We heard from parents, I think we're hearing it in the emails and letters we're getting, but that we need to actually right-size the budget, not just keep it level. And, you know, if we do go forward with that, I think you might want to call it something other than level services plus. I think there's so much confusion with people with level funding, level services. I mean, a lot of the emails that we're getting, I'm reading it, and I'm like, you know, I don't think people are even understanding the difference between the two options we have now. So I think we need to be really clear that if we have a third budget option that we're presenting, this is a budget that actually meets the needs of the schools.
Yes, go ahead. Okay.
To clarify, process, time for everybody? So at town meeting, they're voting on the budget will be on the ballot in four days or whatever. So you make a motion for a budget at town meeting, so you propose a budget, and then they vote it up or down, and then you propose another budget if they vote it towards down.
No. Yeah, well, because of the, I think, because the ballots have to be printed ahead of time, the valid question about the override, so you only have to vote on the override. So the balanced budget just would, just as normal course, that gets approved at town meeting, that's the budget that is definitely approved. If town meeting also approves the override budget, then that question has to be answered again at the ballot. The tricky part is, it's on the ballot regardless, because it's already been printed. So there have been cases where a override has failed at town meeting, but then passed on the ballot, because people voted for it at the ballot. But more commonly, it will pass at town meeting and fail at the ballot. So that's the, yeah, it's a little bit.
So I think you have to vote on, you have to vote on the balanced budget first at town meeting, and then you vote on the override.
So, yes, I believe that is what the town is doing, although there are different, there was a lot of confusion around that, even amongst the townspeople, because we don't, we haven't done it very often, but there are different ways can, it can be presented. I think the select board gets to decide how it's going to be presented at town meeting.
Right.
But at town, I remember, yes, at town meeting, do I understand correctly that within the balanced budget, the vote could go, could, it has, it eventually needs to be yes, no matter what, for the balanced budget, but there could be, hey, the town could say, we want a fine arts director, and I have a motion to, you know, put the fine arts director back in the budget and take out, you know, something else. I don't know. Like, that could technically happen?
At town meeting?
Yes.
I don't think so. The school committee has the right to decide. They just vote on the number. You're, you get to decide on the individual budget.
Yeah, I think somebody could take that number, dollar amount.
Not the position, but they could take the dollar amount. But they would have to pull from somewhere else, so that the, so the budget is still balanced.
And ultimately, it would necessarily add an arts director, because it's up to us.
Yeah.
But they could put the, they could ask to put the dollar.
Yeah, they can change the number.
Yes.
So if override failed, could you like citizen's petition in like a smaller override, like at town meeting?
It's really hard to do, but.
Yeah. I don't think so, but I don't know. I obviously don't know.
The hard part about it is that it's a ballot of the following date, the following weekend.
Yeah.
How do you get, if something else?
Oh, right, yeah, so right, because you couldn't put it on the ballot. So, yeah, that's true. Yeah, so I guess you couldn't put a citizen's petition to do, change the amount of the override.
Unless people write, you can write it in. Like, you know how you could.
Let's not.
It is very confusing. And I also want to say that I don't want anyone, I want to just be very clear that I don't think anyone here is talking about this, a potential third budget option, to mess things up, or to muck up the works, or to put advisory or select board in a bad position at all. I don't, I don't want people now like running to the like, yeah, do this. It's, it's just part of the process. And if that, if our job is to advocate for the schools, to get the schools to fund the appropriate amount of funding that they need to meet the needs of the students, the strategic plan that everybody agreed to, the master plan that everybody agreed to, then that's, I think, a discussion worth having. And I hope it doesn't come across to anybody as, you know, just, as trying to do something. I mean, we're, we're just trying to do our jobs here.
Right. Yeah.
Can I ask a question on that? So what struck, and I know, you know, I've been talking about three budgets a different way, but the unmet needs, so when I hear, I think it's Missy, talk about, and when, you know, at water, below sea level, at sea level, or like way above sea level, like to me, actually, the, and I listen to all these presentations, even with the unmet needs, like, is that way above sea level? Like, I, I've struggled a little bit with saying what you're saying, which is, we should be, our job is to, everyone is saying, we should be advocating to deliver the best-in-class experience for our students, with, which I agree with, but we have to do it also in the context of what the town is willing to pay for. And so I guess, I would like to understand with the unmet needs plus, like, to me, those things are all important. Full-day kindergarten's important, the nursing director's important, additional professional development is important, but like, as I hear, like, guidance counselors, or an additional tutor in every school, or an additional parent, like, how, how did we think about, like, why is that not on the list? Like, that, to me, would do even better. Maybe I'm not thinking about it correctly, but like, it feels almost not big enough. And I understand why it's not, because I think you had to, you know, in the context of this environment, it's difficult to say, well, we want 50 extra positions, and 10 million extra dollars. But I guess that's the question that's on my mind, is like, do we actually even think that unmet needs is really everything that gets us to the best place we can possibly be right now? Like, I don't know.
I would say that time, professional development is one thing that we're definitely struggling with, and you'll see that professional development is linked there. Those who were on the capital facilities tour, got to see on Saturday, got to see firsthand some of the facilities concerns, and to hear directly from Katie St. Clair, some of the upcoming needs that are just not being addressed, and are fast coming, roofs, equipment that's failing. So, I mean, I think those are immediate needs that we're gonna, gonna see. If we don't have the town supporting some of those needs, the schools are going to continue to have to absorb some of that. You have to also remember, two years ago, you added a significant number of positions that staff are working really hard to integrate within the schools and create systems and structures. When you see the update on the strategic plan, you'll see we're creating a system and a structure for MTSS for all of those positions that were added. So we're making the best use of that resource that's been added to the district and to the schools. So that we need 50 more positions? Not yet.
Yeah, I'm not saying 50, but I'm saying there's literally not one extra position we need next year like that.
Remember, we did that reallocation, because we were being really thoughtful. We did say we needed a special education teacher, both at East and PRS, because as they're developing special education programming, there was less to do the direct moderate special needs servicing. So that was a need we put in there. So we made an allocation because we were trying to be, thinking about the increases in our budget, and being fiscally responsible, and saying, can we make a switch? And so we did that.
And I think, too, I think another way to answer that is, when we added the 32 positions two years ago, that, that was right-sizing the staff.
Right, but to get to, you know, what, I guess what I'm struggling with is, do we think we have the absolute best right now? Like, I, like, I guess I, if we're going to support a, or put it out there to select board and say, this is, this is the cream of the crop. Like, to me, the current unmet needs is not cream of the crop. I'm not, I'm sure I'm not actually putting myself well as usual. I'm not saying that the four unmet needs are not incredibly important, or shouldn't be the first four unmet needs. All I'm, I guess I'm pushing on a little bit, is, are we sure there's not more? And now, whether or not we think that the town is willing to pay, as you know, I've said, like, I'm concerned about what we put forward, because I'm really concerned if we don't get of the balanced budget.
Right.
That is a disaster. But I don't know, like, if, I do think we should at least understand it.
I think what I'm hearing from, I think what I'm hearing from Dr. Adams is that they've gone through the motions, they've done a lot of work with the, with all the principal meetings, they've given us a list of what the unmet needs are. I'm sure there's always, there's always more. I feel like you could say that with any school. I feel like you can always say. But then I think that what I'm hearing is, is there also a balance from how much, if we add too much, can we even, can we handle that? if we add too much, can we even, can we handle that? Can we, are we gonna then need to increase?
Can we pull off 32 the first time, the first year?
Yeah, I hear that. I just, it feels like, on the one hand, we're saying, if we lose anybody, then, like, oh my God, like, this is gonna cripple.
Remind you to go also to the staffing audit that showed that our ratios for counselors at the high school and middle school are pretty in line with state averages and national averages.
Right, I guess what I'm saying though is, yeah, and I'm not saying it's, it, I guess what I'm hearing is, we're right sized, but should we be right sized? What we just heard here is not, like, let's be right sized. What we heard here was, no, like, let's be the best.
Can I say something, Michelle?
Yes.
And I think, I think too, that, for example, we have the technology audit happening now. At this moment, it's, it's kind of like, you don't want to ask for things before you actually knew what your needs are too, right?
Well, you can ask for them next year because we're gonna have an MOU.
Right.
I mean, like, that's what, I guess what I'm saying is, like, if, what I've heard from everyone else is, this is the one time we could do it. I, I guess I, I feel a little bit like we're, when I was saying, like, oh, let's go lower.
Right.
Not because, not because I want to, but because I think we need to think about, like, what's kind of, what's.
What's the gamble?
Yeah, I guess that's my question for you, because I'm hearing a little bit of both, should we go even higher? And then, you know, you were saying the other day, should we split the difference and go lower, so.
I think too, the one thing to bear in mind is that part of the MOU that is being considered and part of the conversation isn't that this is one and done, and we're not doing this for another 14 years. This conversation and the MOU is about just trying to hold things for three to five years, and that overrides are going to have to become a regular part of the town budgeting. So I don't think this is our only bite at the apple. I think we do have opportunity for the future. And, and as Ness often says, and if we can right size today, then that lifts up the dollar amount we're starting with. So three and a half or 4% on 65 million is a whole lot better than three and a half to 4% on 62 million dollars. So we can sort of.
It doesn't mean in future years, there's not additional positions. There might be, and that, that amount might be enough to be able to do that, so.
There could be more mandates that come down. I'm sure there will be.
And there will be, there will be retirements. So then, when that happens, you have a higher paid person leaving, and you can fill that in with somebody who's just starting out, and that costs less, so then you can fill in another position, so. I mean, state, state aid could change. I mean, at some point, they're gonna make, we hope that kindergarten will become compulsory, which is a real game changer, because now the state has to fund that. So there are a lot of things, I mean, to hear what you're saying, the tough part about probably the role is just trying to put the budget for the next 12 months, the best budget that you can to meet the needs of everyone for the next 12 months. It's hard, because you've got contracts that go for three years, and you know the needs that are coming, and you know who some of the students are, and then you have this whole big, you don't know who's coming, we know what we have today, so I always make that comparison. I'm like, what makes the budgeting process so hard is that you're budgeting for next year using today's students. Because we don't know who September, we don't know who's coming into the door September 1st of 2023, right? But we're having to make a lot of assumptions. But so, there are so many things that change year to year.
Right. You can also see on the horizon the foster opening, which has the pre-K program and the expand, a needed expansion in order to meet that need. So we can't add those pre-K positions because we don't have any space for them. So that is on the horizon and coming, as well as the potential spaces that are gonna be available for special education programming, but we don't have space for them right now. So those are things that are on the horizon, but not yet.
And, and also to add to that as well, if it is that we're, we are able to do that, get to the unmet needs, where we have the 300,000 move into our operations, and we have 300,000 more, if it's actually allocated to us, that 300,000 more of capital, it means that we're able to get a lot of our capital needs met during this year. That's one piece of it. If we have professional development go up by another 200,000 in addition to our level services for professional development, it gives us capacity both for technology and, and other professional development needs that we have. So I think it, it gives us a lot of capacity if we're able to get even up to, into the unmet need, unmet needs, if we can get up to the point where we say, okay, full-day kindergarten, we're gradually reduced over time. I think just getting those first three things would be a big jump for us in terms of making sure that we're in a good place going forward.
I think remembering that much of our capital needs, but some, all that emergency maintenance is coming out of our operating budget instead of the capital, because we're not getting enough capital funding.
Right.
So we're using operating funds to address those needs.
If you go back to the budgets, you'll see that the, in terms of maintenance, it has exceeded the budget by sometimes hundreds and thousands of dollars every year. So if it is that we can move all that into capital, as Margaret said, it gives us so much more space to do some of our even instructional stuff as well.
One thing, the unmet needs, I understand them. One that we haven't talked about in a while is the diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging director, whether that would still be somebody who, role that the Metco director is looking to fill, or do you have another vision of that? Or are you waiting until the equity audit is complete?
Yeah, I don't think we're ready to have a DEI director. I think we have some foundational work, and I think, hopefully, the audit will really support what that foundational piece is, so that in the future, that can be a position that we might look towards.
Okay. Yeah, so just, I was thinking, you know, you mentioned that we added 32 positions a couple of years ago. We also added some last year.
Yes.
And that went a long way towards right sizing. The unmet needs, because I asked this question the first budget presentation, like, do you have enough? And the, the thing is, the unmet needs that are listed there are specifically tied to the strategic plan, like, that we can back those up. We, we can show that we need them, and the community all agreed that we need them. And I guess the other reason I would also advocate for putting four, three budgets, and we, Tim mentioned that we have a certain constituency that comes to our meetings and sends us emails, but the master, master plan also, that was the whole community, and it was very clear that people wanted excellent schools. And same with the strategic plan, everyone had an opportunity to fill in the survey or to come to focus groups, and this is what we agreed wanted as a town. So I, I think it's our responsibility to put that forward.
A question.
Yes.
Quickly, I know, like, last year, like, because of some, like, teachers leaving, et cetera, like, the budget ended up being a little bit under. I was just curious, like, how are we tracking this year on the budget? Is there gonna be space? Like, how, like, are the estimates over, or is it more close to you and the budget?
So far, we're doing okay.
Yep.
We'll have an update to the, the committee in March.
Okay.
So we provide that to you as well.
All right. And it wasn't really that far under either. There was only, yeah, it was only $30,000 at the end of the year.
In the end, yes.
Yeah.
In terms of process with town meeting, did we, did we land on a spot where we feel confident that we know how the process works, or do we want to reach out to the town clerk and maybe get some clarification on some things? Because the ultimate.
Town council or town clerk?
I was thinking, doesn't the buck stop with town clerk in terms of running?
Well, the logistics, such as saying, but not the how things are gonna be presented.
Okay.
So that will come down to.
Okay. I mean, some of, we can at least get, you know, solid about the process.
Right.
Okay, right, because I'm, clearly, I'm a little confused. I don't know if I'm the only one, but.
Yeah, I think it's how it's worded, how the Warren article is worded, probably, because we don't want to, you know, do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right. And you, yes, so there, it will have to be a lot of thought by the select part and the moderator about how, I mean, I was, I mean, they did a great job at the Foster Public Safety Building, I think, explaining to people, not just in the Warren article, but at the meeting as well. So I would expect that will be the case this time, too. All right. So soon, April 10th, we're inclined to vote tonight. All right.
Can I just add one more thing? Sorry, I meant to say earlier, the comment about, don't get, get into a standoff with the town. I just wanted to say that the meetings that we've had so far with the select board and the advisory committee, I've been really impressed with the questions that they've asked. It's been very thoughtful. The whole, budgets are always messy. It's been like that every year.
Right.
And this is particularly so. But I, I, I don't know, I have full confidence in that we'll be able to work through that with them. And, and I think that the special town meeting that we had in the fall is a good indication that this, these, we're the right people, right place, right time, you know, so.
Yeah, I would agree.
And I just add onto that, I think, that also, if we're asking for these unmet needs to help right-size the budget to keep through it down in the future, that we are acting in good faith in those meetings, too. I don't see it as a standoff. I see it as trying to do our job to look towards the future and keep.
Very responsible, yeah.
And to add to that, I completely agree. I don't think it's a standoff. I, the select board has come out and said that they're supportive of an override. They've all said that, and AdCom has been saying that we have a revenue problem for years and years. They've been saying it in Warren articles for years. So I suspect that they know that we have a revenue issue, and they know that we need to do this.
Yeah. No, yep. And I think, just in all the conversations that, and the meetings that we've been to, that this, it's a messy process, and this one in particular is. And I think everyone's just looking for the best solution, from the town administrator to the select board, to advisory, to us. I mean, we all want to get to the right answer here. So I don't think anyone is going to, I, I don't think it's a bad thing for, for us to be a group that says, hey, we thought of this option as well, that should be considered. And again, if, hopefully, we will all come to consensus, and if they don't like the idea, we have the right and the ability to rethink, and maybe what we say helps change people's minds, or at least gets them to consider it. So I don't think it's, I don't think we lose anything, and I don't think this has to be something that is a standoff or erases any goodwill, because I think we've really worked very hard over the last couple of years to really share and present to all the other boards exactly what we need, just like the other town departments do. And I think we are all really at a place where everyone acknowledges what the needs are, and now the answer is, how do we, how do we get the funds to, to fuel that? So, all right. All right, so, all right, we won't take action tonight, but I'd say maybe we should be prepared to think about that for the 27th. Yeah, so let's maybe plan the 27th, but we do have time. And then I think we also have that meeting, the joint meeting, is perfect timing, so some of this conversation, we can have this with them Thursday night, just tell them, hey, we met Monday night, and this is what we were thinking, and get their feedback. Okay. All right, 7.2 is to review transportation fees for outside groups.
Yes.
Okay.
So we presented those fees for review previously, and today we're just asking for a vote on those fees.
Okay.
Those fees, as they stand right now, they will cover the costs of operations. We've stratified them based on in-town groups and in-town travel, as well as out-of-town travel and, as well. So hopefully, if you have any questions, that, you know.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on these? I know we've seen these before. Okay.
Are these, are these all buses, or do these include vans? Do we ever have anybody renting vans?
Not, not very often. Mostly, mostly buses.
That makes sense.
Right. And in terms of any, any comparatives of nearby districts, a lot of the nearby districts, they're barely able to, like, just even meet the needs of their kids right now. So it's not something that's very, very much available. In some cases, we even help out other districts as well.
Okay.
In terms of transportation, for our nearby districts at least.
So it's not like this isn't, we really can't compare and say, oh, these districts are charging this because they're not even able to meet their own needs.
Exactly.
Okay, that makes sense.
In terms of nearby districts.
Okay. All right, if nobody has any questions, I will.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed transportation fees for other groups and organizations.
Second?
I will second.
All right, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
May I oppose?
Okay, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, new business, 8.1 to receive an update on the much-noted strategic plan. It's come up a few times tonight.
You can click for me. Sure. So we wanted to present an update on the strategic plan briefly. It's an update on the five goals. The first goal is around supporting partnerships between home and school and two-way communication. The Special Education Continuous Improvement Task Force is being launched this month and will begin doing its work. We've begun the work of supporting the district's budget with a variety of stakeholders. We have initial plans to open up Aspen Family Portal. We're hoping, within weeks, to be able to open up the high school, and then followed by the middle school, and then the elementary, which will allow parents to log in and see report cards and attendance. Our hope also, we're doing some planning so that your beginning-of-year information, you know, when you check off your media release, you check off that you've read the handbook, can all be done via Aspen at the beginning of the year. So we're beginning some of that work and hope.
Sorry, I'm very excited about that.
So some of that is underway, and we hope to have that, all that planning's going on now, so it'll be ready. We want to make sure to train families how to log in, to just look at your student's information, and then, so that when we try this in the, in the fall, in, at the beginning of the school year, families will be trained to how to access their student's information. So that is underway. We've been working to communicate student absences in a procedure and a process at the elementary level specifically, where after, because of COVID, we've, we feel like families need reminders about the importance of attendance, and so we're going back to making sure to inform parents about when they have reached a certain number of absences and the importance of attendance in school.
I saw the report you gave earlier, chronic absenteeism has raised all over the whole state, so.
Yes.
We're not alone in that.
Yes, yes.
Well, those were last year's numbers.
Yes.
So, COVID.
We've begun the registration process for kindergarten. After break, we're also gonna try to do some social media campaigning around, hey, you have a grade one through 12 students, registration is open, so we can draw enrollment back into the schools. You'll see in the coming weeks, the middle school is having its own program of studies night. Tonight is the high school's program of studies night, so trying to bring back all of those traditions that allow us to showcase what both the schools have to offer. As part of the technology plan and the equity audit, we've been doing surveys of the community and stakeholders that'll help inform the development of those plans. We've collaborated with the PTO. There was a great evening with Najah Riley on supporting SEL needs of, of students, and I know the elementary PTOs hope to bring her back just to speak specifically to elementary parents. And in a recent survey we did with parents, a small one, much of the communication, number one way parents are getting communications are from their principal's weekly updates, and the consistent format and the frequency of it has allowed families to feel like they have more information about what's going on in the schools.
I have just one question on the, the Special Education Continuous Improvement Task Force. Is there a list of who's on that anywhere? I'm just curious.
We can share a list.
Oh, I have an attendance.
Okay, all right, thanks.
At least I rep on it.
Yes.
Next, do you want to make a comment?
Oh, sure, yes. So we, as you know, will be presenting our mid-year data for MTSS on the Monday after the February break, and continue to work on refining our MTSS system, including grouping students to address their needs. including grouping students to address their needs. We shared a little bit about some of the evolving partnerships with local universities, so we could offer dual enrollment. And so we are still in progress in terms of solidifying those partnerships. The professional development offerings continue, and we are in the process now, in fact, of beginning to plan for next year. But we have had a number of both content-specific PDs of late, and also a number of professional development around SEL, which is increasing in importance. We continue to implement the Open Say Ed curriculum at Hingham Middle School, and we've had a number of trainings on that. And the Professional Development Committee, we're actively analyzing some survey data from staff to help inform our professional development plan that you will hear at the end of the year.
So we continue also to support...you've heard us talk about tiered systems of support, both for academic and social-emotional learning. We used an agency that's part of the state called Safe Schools to support all K through 12 educators in having a session about how do we support our LGBTQT youth and families. We completed the elementary portion of that, I believe it was December or January. District leaders are also participating in that culturally-responsive Practice Leadership Academy, and they're walking us through a planning process of how to plan for an equity plan. We are also...the DEI Task Force is supporting that equity audit, and our district libraries are also supporting the diversification of our libraries, as well as sort of making connections to the curriculum. As part of capital and finance, the Foster Building Project, the parking lot that was built, the temporary playground, we hope will be open any day now. And if you have the chance to stop by or drive by, the amount of work that's been done in a short amount of time is just phenomenal. We're hopeful the project continues with such great...the contractors, the OPM, everything's been really well done, and we're very appreciative of the school building committee's work to shepherd that project through. The building meetings with the PRS Window Project continue. We have a long punch list, but it gets...we feel we're making progress and hope to bring to conclusion most of that project. And we've shared a couple times about the Technology Committee, it's completing its needs assessment, and has been looking at survey data. It's going to start talking now about visioning and some beginning to draft goals as part of that plan. We have a district team that's participating as part of the teacher diversification professional learning community. That group will also develop a plan that sort of develops some short-term and long-term goals for diversification of our teaching and educators. We also became a member in November of the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education. They're a group of mostly human resource professionals who work together to collaborate on strategies and policies, procedures that can really support teacher diversification of educators. We also, in the middle school and elementary, continued with providing space in the school day for educators to meet, and school and district leaders to look at data that supports literacy and math, as well as SEL implementation of our MTSS. So in the packet we also gave you, you'll see the same document we gave you in the fall, but in red is all the stuff from the fall. So here's the key. Red was the stuff from the fall, and blue was the information we added that since that time. It was contributed... we had contributors from our school and district leaders, as well as our coordinators, added to the text of that. We'll share that document again later on in the spring with additional updates of what we felt we've accomplished. So this was sort of a general overview to kind of show the progress thus far. I'm very proud of our educators and our district school leaders, who really have accomplished quite a bit, in addition to working on building projects and budgets, have really supported much of the work that's in the strategic plan. So we have a lot to be proud of.
In a busy, tumultuous year, where our eyes have been on lots of different balls across every...that's pretty impressive that in year one of the strategic plan, this much has been accomplished. So I echo.
I think it's important, despite the challenges, that the educators, the staff, is working hard to further the work that happens in schools every day, and really move forward in a spirit of continuous improvement.
Really, very impressive. Anyone else?
So a ton of great accomplishments. I think I asked this the first time. Now we're a little bit further in, the first time you presented this. Any...is there one strategic objective that you're most concerned about? Maybe it's too strong, but like, that is a lot of great accomplishments across everything, but it keeps you up at night a little bit more, either from things that you haven't been able to accomplish over the last six months, or looking forward?
I think some of the capital needs. I think you'll see that in that column, while we've accomplished a lot with the budget process, the planning process, the Foster Building Project. Those of you who were on the tour on Saturday heard about some of those needs, which I'm going to try to schedule another one on a Friday morning, if you weren't able to make it. But you heard from Katie some of the significant needs that are coming up, and some of the concerns, and some of the ways that she's been very creative to sort of keep things going and find really creative solutions to ongoing problems. But there is a limit to that. So both in staffing and the funding needed to really upkeep the buildings, I think is important.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question on that. I know you already have the information, because I know I've seen most of the other capital projects and the estimated costs. And then obviously, the UNM needs, you've quantified additional PD and the other things to help complete the strategic plan. Do you have all of them in place, all of those costs from this point moving forward? I know they're estimates, but just kind of a general estimate of, in order to complete the strategic plan, overall, it would cost, you know, in total with all these capital projects?
So some of that is coming out of the capital plan, which I keep messing up the name of it.
The master plan.
The master capital. It's not the master plan. When I think of master plan, I think of the town's master plan. But the master plan is really going to outline what those capital needs are, and we're sort of still waiting for that final document, which we keep promising will be any day, and it hasn't been. So we're really hopeful that document will sort of outline what we've been learning. Both Ayesha and I have been learning over the last couple of months are some significant needs that are coming up.
The other thing, too, that we presented to capital, long-range capital as well, the plan that we submitted, a lot of that mimics some of the drafts that we've seen from the master plan as well. And it includes like a five-year forecast of everything that we need, and it's needed from a capital perspective from now until 2028. So I think a lot of what we know of right now, everything that we know of right now is on that list, and has an estimate of what we think it will cost as well.
Yeah, that's excellent, I think, so needed. I've had a few questions from parents about, you're talking about the budget for next year, and if the OBR doesn't happen, we can't leave the strategic plan. Do you actually know how much it would cost to implement the strategic plan? And it's a moving target, so it's hard to pin down, you know, any one point in time. But I think it would be nice at some point, not right now, once we get through the budget process, to have the, you know, within the strategic plan, updates, maybe a little estimate for the next six to 12 months of what expectation would be. I know you already have all those numbers.
And just to remember as well, a lot of the information that's part of the plan is like these subcommittees that are meeting to determine future needs as well. So whether it be technology, or equity, or professional development, I think these are also like subgroups that are meeting to give us that information. And once we have that information, then it will be easier to be able to budget that out.
Yeah, I think you're still early in the process to be able to do that.
Yeah.
So can I just understand, using technology as an example, I get, you don't know what it's going to be, we have a subcommittee looking at it. At the end of the year, we'll have a recommendation for what we need to do to achieve that plan, which could, in light of will, include dollars, I would assume.
So just to add to your thoughts as well, is that as part of that, the capital master plan, the capital plan that we...long-range capital plan that we have in place as well, it also includes technology needs to the year 2028 as well, which would...a lot of it is, for example, whether it be Chromebooks replacement, or even in terms of the infrastructure that we need to replace, that's also on that plan as well. So I mean, hopefully we'll have some oomph-shattering information that comes out of the technology review that we're doing right now. But we also have a plan in place.
We're not sure if it's perfect. We don't think it's perfect, but it's not going to be like we...our budget is zero.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Remember, it's a best practice to have a technology plan. If you go to many, all districts, most districts have a technology plan, and that's what it is, has goals and objectives that you're working towards. Not that we accomplish all of them, but we make best efforts, that this is what we think we're making progress. Most districts have a professional development plan as well. Newer, also, across the state, folks are thinking deeply about equity. You'll now start to also see equity plans that have sort of outlined some goals and some objectives that get a little more fine-grained than what you see in the strategic plan.
Yep.
And there's a subcommittee who's sort of working and monitoring the progress of those goals and giving feedback, and making revisions and edits to it as you go along. Sometimes our goals are way too ambitious, and we don't make as much progress. Sometimes they're not ambitious enough, and we need to make...we end up making much more progress than we originally thought. And they change as you make progress. That's why I was a big proponent of not having a five-year strategic plan, but just having a three-years, feeling that that's just the right amount of time to sort of feel that you've made progress enough and have made enough revisions and edits to begin the process again of developing some other goals.
Makes sense. The amount of progress you've made so far is impressive, given everything else that's been going on.
You have a lot to be proud of that happens every day in classrooms and schools.
And just to add to that, the master plan that they are referring to is a consultant that had been hired to go through the long-term capital plan, which we'll get an update at our next finance and capital subcommittee. So there's...that was put into place, and the consultants had done that last year. And Jen is chairing that to review that process with some community members. So we'll get an update on that.
When they started the process, a lot of the numbers were before all the rates increases with construction costs and everything. So we're trying to get more accurate numbers so that we can get a final, accurate number.
Right. And some of the things we've actually done.
Yes.
As well. So we're taking those things out of the plan, because we've already checked those boxes where we can.
I will say, those of you who were on the tour on Saturday, Katie St. Clair is an amazing resource, knows where everything, how everything works, and some amazing creative solutions to extend equipment beyond its life. So she's an absolute gem, and we thank her for all of her work. And you clearly saw that on Saturday, that extremely knowledgeable of the facilities and its needs.
She's phenomenal.
She is.
Awesome. All right, anything else on that? All right, well, thank you. Excellent work. You know, the more data that we've gotten this year, and this has been, I think, a great data year. So really appreciate all the efforts and putting it together. I mean, it does seem, I mean, we...there are certainly shortcomings in the district, but I mean, we have really made some excellent progress this year. So it's really a testament to all of you, the leadership team, all our educators, and the families as well who have stuck with it. It really is...we're really on a great trajectory.
I think it's another good reason to support a level-service budget, or the above-sea-level budget as well, to support the work that's happening in the district.
Absolutely. All right. Item 8.2 is to review a change for the Hingham High School Program of Studies, and act appropriately so that the study that's happening right now.
This is...these are two small changes. One change happened, I think, the night you were approving the program of studies, this change came in. We think it really opens up an opportunity for high school students. It's a course that's been in the program of studies, but was not approved by the NCAA. But we finally did get approval for this course to count as a course that students could take if they were pursuing Division I or Division II college athletics eligibility. So we thought that this was important opportunity for some students, and wanted to try to make sure we included it in the program of studies. So it came right on the day you were approving, but we did want to make that change. Was it...
The primary change is simply the title. So that our previous title did not reflect the fact that there's rich reading and writing and so on involved that makes it worthy of English credit. And so it was simply a matter of a title change and some clarification around the reading and writing expectations that are involved, so.
Okay. All right.
Allison just took this class.
And I think the second part is just some clarification about the physical education requirement.
Yes.
That was not clear enough, so it adds that additional change to clarify the physical education change that was made.
Was the change to phys ed just for kids who are participating in sports, or was that a change across the board? I'm not remembering.
It's...if they're participating in sports at the school, but they can also supplement if they go to the gym, or they can present another. It's not just...
So they don't have to play.
They don't have to play sports, per se.
Okay.
Formative, so it's 72 hours of...
Yeah.
Right, so that doesn't need to be reflected in the requirement?
I think there's language in other places.
There was language in there.
Yeah. This is to indicate that the change is with the class of 2026 and the subsequent classes.
Which is the current freshman class.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, make a motion to approve the proposed Hingham High School Program of Studies for 2023, 2024.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. Those are approved as well. All right, item nine, our supplementary and project reports of school revenue. Matt have anything?
East is school council is meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Ally?
Hingham Arts Alliance is meeting right as we speak. They also have a party on March 13th. I think you've all received the invite probably multiple times at this point, but hopefully we'll see somebody there. They have a lot on the docket. They have some performers and auction items, and great food, and all kinds of other fun things. And Climate Action Planning Committee is meeting Thursday, also during our meeting.
So many meetings.
I didn't say that either. But they are planning to come. They couldn't come tonight, unfortunately. The plan is in its final draft stages, and they're hoping to have the complete plan before they present to us. And I still owe you a day to get back on that.
No problem.
The Special Ed Subcommittee met last Thursday evening via Zoom, and had a good discussion of the budget, and specifically how that affects special education, and then had kind of an open-ended discussion for office, and sort of a mini Special Ed office hours after that. So that was good. Wednesday night is the Hingham Educational Foundation Board Meeting. CPAC met, I think, Monday. We had a meeting, so I think it was Monday, last week, Monday. I was not able to attend that meeting because we had another meeting.
Nothing?
Yeah? Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Human Rights Commission also met a week ago, and I was also unable to go to that meeting because we had a budget meeting. It's amazing the amount of meetings we can't go to because of budget.
We have so many meetings today.
And last but not least, just letting people know that the Hiring Committee for the Executive Director of Student Services will be kicking off, and I think we have our first meeting the week after vacation.
Thank you.
For example, screen candidates, yeah.
Carrie?
All right, so our negotiations met on February 7th last week to discuss negotiations with Unit B. And we also met on the 8th, the next day, to prepare for negotiations with Unit A. And we are looking forward to starting negotiations with Unit A on Wednesday, this Wednesday, the 15th. the 15th. The Hangham Middle School Council met on January 30th, and the next meeting's going to be on February 27th. Couple updates from that, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey will be administered to Grade VII this spring, so the school council is going to give some feedback on the survey at the next meeting. There are two school-wide assemblies on social emotional learning. The Massachusetts Youth Partnership is doing one regarding bullying and power differentials. I think that one already happened at this point. And then Anthony Valentine was going to present on the importance of identity and impact students have on their school community, and that's a partnership with Metco. And information on both is going to be sent home to parents, so they knew about it and had some talking points. MKS schedule was sent out to parents, and then we talked, lengthy discussion on the budget as well, because there's a lot of concern with that council. We also went to the, I think, a middle school PTO meeting with Dr. Adams on February 1st, and it was just intended to inform parents about the potential budget impacts. It was pretty well-attended, it was 16 people in the room and 35 online, which considering it was like 3:00 in the morning on a weekday, it's pretty good. They had a couple of PTO items I was going to mention, so they're doing a staff appreciation candy bar, so they're working on that. They worked on mini-grants, they had $10,000 in requests, and they had $8,000 to give out, and then they're working on making sure that a good percentage of the families pay dues to the middle school PTO, because they do, it's kind of raising awareness on what they fund, because they do a lot of great work. And yeah, I just, I wanted to mention that the comments in the room, I mean, they're parents, so it's a particular constituency, but they're very much in favor of an override.
Thank you. Jen?
I have the South PTO meeting that I'm going to be attending on March 4th, I believe, and then I'm also going to attend their Read Across America breakfast. So if any parents have questions about the budget, I will be there, and I think Ally is going to join me as well. And then I also have the South School Council coming up in two weeks.
Yep, I have, as far as finance, I have the warrants, thank you Sheri. I know that that takes a long time to scan in, so you'll see all of the warrants in there. And then over the weekend, as was mentioned, Dr. Adams and Ayesha had hosted us to do a facilities tour, so thank you, Michelle, for organizing that, and for you guys hosting us, and for Katie St. Clair, we got to see all the needs from several different locations, four different locations, three schools, and the transportation building, so that was really helpful and insightful. And then the, I attended the school council meeting on January 31st. We had an update of the budget and the new elementary school building project. Also attended the PTO meeting on February 2nd. Dr. Adams presented an update on the budget. And then the last but not least, Sustainable Budget Task Force, Liz Klein and I are going to be hosting office hours to talk about budget and override process for anybody who has questions. We're going to be hosting on February 15th at noon, so this coming Wednesday, and then March 1st at 7:00 PM. There will be a message going out from the town, should be going up today, so I'll share that with everybody.
Are those in person or on Zoom?
On Zoom, yes. Yeah.
Thank you. Ness and I hosted office hours last Monday. There were a few folks showed up, a bunch of talk was the pretty much entirety of the conversation, but it was a really great, great conversation, got some great feedback from folks. We talked about the process a little bit, so it was great information sharing, I think on both sides, from both parents that were there and ourselves. On April 12th, if people want to just mark their calendars, there's a number of community groups are coming together, the Unity Council, the Hangham Education Foundation, CPAC, Hangham Sports Partnership, and the Hangham Arts Alliance to co-host a mental health forum here at Town Hall. It will be, I believe, at 7:00 PM, April 12th, in the Sandborne Auditorium. And this came together at the request of the town, had reached out and asked if community groups would be interested in putting something on. So it should be a very informative evening. We have a speaker, there'll be a moderator, and it should be a really good community conversation, so just want to start getting the word out there. And really glad that all these organizations are coming together to co-host, I think that's really impactful. And other than that, we've got our joint meeting with Select Board and Advisory on Thursday at 7:00 PM, and then our next full school community meeting is February 27th. We should just be standing here today. But officially, our budget meetings are over, so now we, all the budget discussions will be in the context of the regular meetings.
Glad we got the budget all wrapped up.
Yeah. You guys got it all.
Good job, us.
And that's all I have. Any, anything for 48 hours? Nothing? All right, I would make a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.